nearly a full crowd here tonight. Before we start, I want to mention that Chatham lost a very dear member of our community earlier this week. Mary Kavanaugh passed away way, way too early. She was the head of the Chatham Chamber of Commerce. She was, as somebody said, a phenomenal ambassador for Chatham to many, many different segments of our community and to other parts of the Cape on behalf of Chatham. And I'd like to start the evening by taking a minute to just reflect on that loss. Thank you very much. Let me start by noting that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone is recording the meeting, please notify the chair. This is the Chatham Select Board meeting for September 12, 2023, and it is the Town Hall for the Center for Active Living Community Forum Number Two pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 23, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20 until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV now Xfinity Channel 8 and 1070, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Before I review the agenda for the evening, let me ascertain that we have a quorum here. Select Board Member Nick Castro.
Present.
Select Board Member Davis.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Present.
And Select Board Member Shell is also present. Tonight, we have four items on the agenda. To begin with, I will briefly review the Community Forum Guidelines as I did the last time. Town Manager Jill Goldsmith will then introduce the project team, all of whom are here to answer your questions and make any necessary explanations. We will then have a brief summary of the project's financial impact from Finance Director Alex Halela. And then finally, we will have an open session of public comment. And at the end of that, I would expect that the members of the Select Board may have a comment or two to conclude the evening. But with that, let me just say, I thought that we had a very, very good collaborative, thoughtful discussion at our August 22 meeting, which was also a Town Hall Forum format. I hope we can duplicate that again this evening. We're going to notionally ask people to confine their remarks to, if you have remarks to make, to five minutes. And I will try to urge you along if you're getting close to the five minutes. I hope that we can all observe appropriately decorous conduct that is typical of our public meetings and that we can basically work with one another to have a good dialogue as we proceed through it. So with that, I will say finally, the board will act as the moderator. I'll try to do that mostly myself, but with help from my colleagues here. And I would say in conclusion, we all know that there is not complete agreement in town or probably in the room, almost certainly in the room, but let's disagree without being disagreeable. And with that, I will turn it over to Town Manager Jill Goldsmith.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So tonight, I want to introduce the project team. With us, we have Rick Pomeroy, who is our owner's project manager. Rick and his firm would be onsite for the project, and we know that from our experience with the Chatham Fire Station project. And Rick has had more than, I believe, 60 municipal projects, so well experienced. We also have the town's architect for this project, Joel Barkman. You've seen Joel in presentations. He has assisted in the design or designed more than 25 senior centers. So tonight, our project manager and our architect will not have a presentation, but certainly that the packet that was posted to the town's website does have the project presentation from the August 22 meeting. I also want to just acknowledge the team Chatham, our town employees who are here with us tonight to answer any questions. We have our Finance Director Alex Halela, who you'll see in just a minute, our Director of Community Services, Leah Lacrosse. We have our Fire Chief, Justin Tavano. And I'm looking to see if there's any more. And we have others online. So again, we're not making a presentation tonight, but we're certainly available to answer any questions. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Let me now invite Alex Halela, our Finance Director, to the podium to make her presentation with respect to the project's financial impact.
I think it's coming up now. Okay. Yep, that's it. Okay. Whenever we present a project to Town Meeting for the townspeople to vote on, we always like to let people know the best estimates for what the estimated tax rate will be for the project in advance of you voting for it. So, the tax impact for the Center for Active Living, as it is being presented under Article 5 of the Special Town Meeting warrant, at a cost of $11,64,661. We're using an interest rate of 5% at this time for a 20-year term. So, the impact to a single-family home in the first year of borrowing is projected to be, and this is the left-hand column, and we've listed the value of a single-family home at a high of $2 million, down to a low of $500,000. But the tax impact for the first year would be nine cents. We're expecting the tax impact to hit the tax rate at the earliest in FY 2026 or FY 2027. And again, all these numbers are dependent on how much we borrow at the time. But if we were to borrow the full $11,64,000 for the first year for a single-family home valued at $2 million, the first-year increase impact would be $190.61. In the final year, again, estimated would be four cents for $99.83 in the final year or the 20th year. These are also based on the tax rate of $3.57, which was just certified by the Department of Revenue, and on the FY 2024 valuations that are posted on the town's website on the Assessor's Database. If you go into the Assessing Summary, not on the field cards yet, so I just want to make that sure. You have to go into the Assessing Summary. There's two locations to find that, but I just checked it before this meeting. So, the FY 2024 valuations for every property are up as of today on the Assessing Summary, not on the field cards. Again, just making that clear. We're going to try to get those on the field cards as soon as possible for people as well. Again, this could change, but looking at the impact for the years 2 to 3 would be nine cents, declining to eight cents for years 4 to 7, seven cents years 8 to 10, six cents in years 11 through 13, and then again, five cents for years 14 through 17, and the final years at four cents. There's been talk too about our estimated debt projections, and are we able to fit this in? Can the town afford to issue new debt? So, what we've done is we have the estimated debt projections. The dark blue is the existing debt, so that's debt that has already been approved and issued. We have additional debt that has been approved but has not been issued yet, and that is for the waterfront infrastructure, and that's in yellow. Wastewater Phase 1, that also includes debt that has not been authorized by the town, but it is planned out for Phase 1 to sewer the town, two-thirds of the town. So, we have that planned out all the way down. You can see that. That's a green checkered box. The Council on Aging and Center for Active Living would be the purple block there. And then the transfer station, there are two phases for the transfer station, which have been approved by Town Meeting, and those are that striped on the top there. So, that will hit Phase 1 at one time, and then Phase 2 comes on again a little bit later. We're phasing those in over different years. And again, we're looking at our debt limits. Our debt limit is set by Mass General Law as well as the town's financial policies. It's based on the FY 2022 Equalized Valuation, or EQV, and that's certified by the Department of Revenue. They'll be issuing another EQV for FY 2024 once all 351 municipalities have their FY 2024 value certified. The debt limit is 5% of that $8.7 billion, so we have a 5% limit of $438,438,940. And then we have to back out the debt that's already been issued. So, we have $90 million in long-term debt outstanding. We have short-term debt of $40.3 million, mostly through the Clean Water Trust, which are those 0% loans that we get through the state. And then we have what's called the Authorized Unissued Debt. That's debt that the town has approved, but we have not issued bonds for yet. So, the total debt outstanding is just over $176 million. Then we have to back out the water debt. This is the calculation per the Department of Revenue. So, we have an available debt limit of $275,097,58. And as I've stated before, we would not issue that in one year. We would not even ask for it to be approved in one year. But what I'm saying is that we can, the town, if it so chooses, can issue the $11 million for the Center for Active Living without impact to our debt limits. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, I just want to point out that the debt service is principal and interest that would be paid each year, similar to a mortgage. And we did present to the Select Board back on August 29, a very deep discussion on debt, everything debt. So, if you want to refer to that too, I would invite you to review that presentation. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Does the board have any questions? And the audience, any questions online in the back? Can I ask you, for all questions, please come to the microphone and state your name and where you live?
I'm Jim McNair. I live in Chatham. My question is, our debt limit is calculated on the market values of all the houses in Chatham, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So, we're calculating our debt limit on market value. Market value can change, as we all saw in 808, and a moment's noticed. The town does not own any of that market value, right?
The town...
It doesn't own the 8 billion?
No, we don't pay taxes on that.
So, the only way that if you increase your debt is to pay taxes, more taxes. You've got to fund it, because cash flow drives debt, not market value, and especially not market value you don't own.
All right. Before I misspeak, I just want to say it is based on the total equalized valuation. I'd have to pull up the tax recap to...
Pretty close to market value.
Yes, because Massachusetts requires that our values are supposed to be full and fair cash value.
I hear the law. But when I got a mortgage, my first house, they asked me how much I made. I didn't care about the market value. Could I pay the debt back? So, the only way to pay the debt back, if we ever borrow that amount, is to increase the taxes, right?
This is where we pay the debt back through the debt service budget, which is...
On the budget, on the taxes.
Correct. And that's why we provide the tax impact.
All I'm saying is, market value disappears overnight. Be careful. I know the law. I've read the law. But that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alex, just one question. You mentioned if we borrow the $11 million in 2026, based on experience, can you, is that likely, or are there circumstances where the borrowing would be different?
It depends. It depends on the construction projects. So, if we're looking at 18 months, I believe, for construction. So, oftentimes, it's cash flow, so we look at that. We might have short-term borrowing in the interim. So, we would issue what are known as bond anticipation notes, where we don't pay any principal, it's just interest, and those are usually low-interest rates. However, when we do that, we look to our financial advisors who know the market and what the interest rates are. For example, we just did a bond issue this past year. Short-term borrowing, the interest rates were not favorable, so we went out for the long-term borrowing. So, again, it depends on how long the project's going to take, when we expect it to finish, whether we'll borrow part of it at one time or the full amount when it's completed. Oftentimes, if we have other projects that are completed, we could issue, you know, half of this, the borrowing for this project at one time, and then, once it's completed, we know all the costs. We could issue the remaining balance at that time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you have a question from the virtual audience?
Yes. Can we see who that is? I can't tell.
I think it's Ms. Gibbs.
Ms. Gibbs? Yes.
Yes, Elaine Gibbs. I just want to make a comment. I quickly went on to the Assessor's Summary, and I would urge people, if you see the $2 million there and how much it's going to cost, that you should go in and look at what your new assessment is, because for fiscal year '24, it's gone up 17%, and that's what will be reflected. So, that is the number that you should look at in terms of what it will actually cost you. And my second comment is that if this debt does not hit until '26, '27, I think we can assume, based on the fact that for the last three years, it's gone up 10%, 20%, and 17% for a total of 55.2% over the last three years, that it may go up again two more times, so that our assessments will go up a couple more times, assuming the market stays strong in terms of our house evaluations. And that's what we're going to be paying it on. So, the $2 million for 191-year home may, as you look it up, be actually 2.34 in November. Thank you.
Alex, go ahead.
Yeah. And again, when we present these estimates, they are estimates based on the FY 2024 valuation and the FY 2024 tax rate. So, not knowing, usually when values go up, the tax rate goes down. So, again, this is a fluctuating number. We also did project a 5% interest rate. Our financial advisors suggested using 4.5, but we like to be conservative not knowing what's going to happen to interest rates. So, those are what those are based on. Again, it's the best presentation we can make based on the best information that we've received.
Thank you. Any other question? Mr. Mott?
Hi, Dave Mott. I live here in Chatham. So, is the tax rate, as far as I know, there's only a couple of ways to raise more taxes. One is to change the valuation. And you say, and as Elaine pointed out, Ms. Gibbs pointed out, that it's gone up certain percentages. You say that the tax rate has gone down, but it doesn't, it's not going down in the same measurement. So, I can tell you, my taxes in the last 10 years have gone up 58%. Even though the tax rate has gone down, my taxes have gone up. So, I think it's a little misleading to say that, just in a blanket statement, that the rate will go down. That doesn't mean your taxes are going down. The second question I have is, when you're making your projection as to how additional, how much additional it's going to cost each year, are you basing that on a static tax rate and a static evaluation of property? Or should that be increased along the way? Let's say in year 10, my valuation has doubled and the tax rate has stayed static. The cost to me would be significantly more than nine cents, let's say. So, is that a static measurement that you're using, or are you projecting out and making some inflationary adjustment?
No, I haven't made any inflationary or deflationary adjustments. You know, when the recession hit in 2008 and 2009, the value of the town went down. So, this is a static rate, static valuation, static rate.
Okay. So, it could cost more in the future, just like it could cost less?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Is there anybody else online?
Elaine, you still have your hand? Nope, there's no one else online. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
And we'll now turn to the public comment section of the agenda. Let me repeat, you can use the podium or the microphone here in the middle of the aisle. We ask that you identify yourself and where you live, and do the best you can to confine your remarks to five minutes. And I'll be happy to recognize, I'll do my best, by the way, to move around the room and also move back and forth between online and in the room. But indulge me, I can't see what's online, so the Town Manager Jill is going to have to help me with that. So, with that, I will invite Mr. Streibert.
My name is Theodore Streibert. I live at Linden Tree Lane. I'd like to speak in favor and will vote for the new Center for Active Living proposed at 1610 Main Street in West Chatham. The existing COA building has served the senior constituency for too long now. The spaces are too cramped for the program needed by our seniors. The new building has been on the launching pad for many years now. Other sites and designs have come up wanting. This site is perfectly ready for approval. The building design has been reworked to try to keep up with construction costs. For years now, it has waited its turn... For years now, it has waited its turn while the town hall annex, the police station, and the fire station all got the go-ahead. Well, now it's the Center for Active Living's chance to proudly stand front and center where it deserves to be built. Never mind that the housing projects that are being built as we speak, with new ones in the pipeline. West Chatham is the best site, because it will be a community presence along with the Oppenheim Center and the Fisherman's Alliance Building to establish West Chatham as a true village in our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. While I'm waiting to see who the next speaker is, let me just note for the record that we have two emails that were submitted during the course of the week. One from Ms. Patricia Chan. I hope I got that right. And one from Marcia Gorgone. Again, I hope I got that right. They will be attached to the minutes. I'm not going to read them, and if they happen to be online, or here in the room, they're certainly welcome to stand up and make the points that were in there. Both of them were opposed to the project. In the back, yes? Yeah, please.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Carey. I live in Chatham. I am in full support of providing a place for seniors to access a range of health and wellness, social, educational, and outreach programs and services to enhance the quality of their lives. However, I do not think that 1610 Main is the best option. I recently visited the Harwich Council on Aging, and I assume the Select Board has also been there and knows what the facility is like. For those of you who haven't been there, it's located in the same building as the Harwich Community Center. It has its own entrance, but the senior center shares meeting rooms with the community center and with the recreation department. If you are interested in checking out the Harwich Council on Aging, they welcome visitors. Also, the majority of their programs and services are available to people who live outside of Harwich. I spoke with several people who work at the Council on Aging, and they all felt that being located in the community center was a tremendous asset. They said that the intergenerational mix of people was a very positive experience for the seniors. Also, the staff can tell how much pleasure and entertainment it gives its participants to be in the same space with children. So why would us thrifty, practical Cape Codders approve to design and build a very expensive new town building when we already have a community center? Our community center has multiple advantages over 1610. First of all, the location, in the heart of downtown, close to gas stations, post office, market, CVS, the library, banks, many restaurants and stores. In addition, it has nice outdoor space and much more parking than the limited 57 spots planned for 1610. It also has a wonderful gym, perfect for physically active activities. And it would provide seniors meaningful interaction with people of all ages. Seniors are better together, and even better with opportunities to socialize with people of all ages, including children. Therefore, I urge you to vote no and consider a better option. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Segal? And Channel 8, I think Ms. Segal has a visual aid.
I have a visual aid, where I wouldn't have been at home. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Joe. Good evening. My name is Barbara Segal. I'm a proud member of the Council on Aging Board of Directors. I stand before you with a simple, yet powerful message. Chatham needs a new senior center, a new active Center for Active Living, and we have found the perfect location at 1610 Main Street in West Chatham. Allow me to begin with a visual, a powerful visual reference. This book weighs five pounds. Its contents contain an extensive description of all the work that has been undertaken since 2016 to find a new home for the Center for Active Living in Chatham. Yet I often hear concerns raised. Some suggest we haven't considered other town properties. Of the 195 town-owned parcels available, 11 were carefully considered for review. These 11 parcels were selected because they could accommodate a one- or two-level development footprint. We've left no stone unturned in our search for the ideal location. Chatham citizens have already invested over $500,000. I think the figure was four-something, but the last go-around wasn't included, for preliminary studies, feasibility assessments, architectural designs. Others claim we haven't truly listened to what the citizens want. Nothing could be further from the truth. In fact, 37 public meetings were held since 2015. I think maybe this is 39 or 40. There's also continued pushback regarding the idea of attaching the senior centers to the community center. But let me be clear. The feasibility studies that were conducted clearly showed that this is not a viable plan. Meredith Frye, Chair of Parks and Recreation, spoke at one of the selectmen meeting, echoed this statement when she said, "The community center and the surrounding green space are well-used by children and young families. Such a move would jeopardize this vital green space and create logistic and aesthetical challenges." Now let's talk numbers. In the period September '22 to February '23, the Center for Active Living had 4,763 participants' visits for programs and services. This means there's a large demand for these services, requiring appropriate facilities. In August alone, an event was held at the senior center, and 30 people attended. Can you imagine the congestion if that event were held at the community center with limited parking? Would participants be forced to park on the fields and need to pull out into heavy traffic on Main Street during Chatham's busiest summer period? Lastly, let's focus on the location at 1610 Main Street. It's not just any place. It's the perfect place. The roundabouts provide safe, easy access to the site year-round. We've observed no traffic backups or accidents since the completion. Seniors already navigate these roundabouts to access local services and businesses, like the Fontaine Center, the West Village Post Office, our job lot, and Larry's PX, among other popular places. Building our new senior center here is not just a good idea, it's the right idea. I understand that this location might not be everybody's first choice, or even some people's second choice. But right now, it's the only choice. Chatham needs a new Center for Active Living, and 1610 Main Street in West Chatham is where it should be. It's time to make the right choice for our community, for our seniors, and for our future. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have anybody online?
I love the book.
I don't see anyone with a hand up. Thank you.
We see a hand up online. Could you please identify yourself?
Yes, hello. Good evening. My name is Brenda Vasquez. I am a gerontologist and was invited here this evening to listen in on the process. I'm very involved with building a center of our own in the town of Dennis. And, but I'm not here tonight in that capacity. I'm really here as a citizen of Cape Cod and understanding, through my work, the importance of older adults having a special place that is designed specifically for their individual and community needs. Just wanted to be an encouragement this evening to think about really what these centers mean for each town, specifically for possibly your town. But I can tell you, in our experience, it's making all the difference to have a space that is dedicated, that is designed with the older adult in mind. Let me remind us that our population is growing very rapidly into that 80-plus space, and as communities, we need to be ready. We saw what happened in COVID. Yes, we were resilient as towns, working together to solve problems, but it also exposed a lot of the challenges that social determinants pose around us. Because we know that health happens in the community after we leave the doctor's office. And as we grow older, as we mature, our needs change, and we have different needs. You know, I don't know if you've heard that social isolation can prematurely kill people, more than smoking 15 cigarettes a day. That is a CDC fact. And there are so many other facts that are related to aging populations that I hope we don't ignore as we look at these decisions that we're making in each of our towns to serve mature and aging populations. So I know that we're excited. Our process has taken six years since I arrived. I know they were in a process prior. And it got more expensive as, as the longer the process took, the more expensive it became, to the point where we had to divide our project into two phases and do a little bit of, you know, reconfiguration in terms of financing this facility. But we're excited to share it with other communities and really to hold it as an example of what we can do here locally to serve our aging population that is rapidly growing. We have conditions that are growing in terms of cognition. And we can address these issues in a modernized Center for Active Living that addresses these concerns: transportation, nutrition, social interaction, exercise, healthcare. Centers will become our local focus point of healthcare and health maintenance. So I just wanted to encourage you a little bit tonight, with some of this thinking around these decisions that you're about to make for the future of the town. I love Chatham, and close to my heart, I love Cape Cod in general. But I love older adults, and I think that as we age, we have a right, and it is not a privilege, but a right, to have the facilities and the care that is required in our golden years. So just want to hope you have a good evening tonight, and just give it some thought. It's just more than a senior center. It really is a center for active and thriving living in our golden years. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Vasquez.
Mr. Chairman, can we ask the speaker to identify the town of her residence?
Did you hear the question, Ms. Vasquez?
Yes, sir.
The question was...
The town of my residence is Mashpee. I live in Mashpee.
Thank you very much.
I work in Dennis.
Thank you. Mr. Barry? Michael Barry, I believe you have a visual aid as well, do you not? Yes, thank you.
I can start. My name is Michael Barry. I live on Dear Mary Lane, Chatham. And I'm serving as the president of the Friends of the Council on Aging. And basically, we're a standalone organization. Our reason for existing is to raise funds for the programming that goes on at the Council on Aging. But tonight, I want to speak about part of the campaign for the new Council on Aging at 1610 Main Street. What you see on the screen is an ad that ran in The Chronicle last week. It's called an endorsement ad. All of the names... Oh, by the way, the title is, "Your Chatham Investment Achieves Superior Benefits, Superior Returns." It's based upon the investment aspect of building in Chatham. Basically, your property just increases in value, and the attributes to the town are self-evident. But this is called an endorsement ad. All the names are people who live in Chatham, but only seasonally. There are 199 names in this particular ad. We did receive more endorsements that have come in since the publication date. When I say "we," I'm talking about my participation in the committee known as Team 1610193, who are endorsing this particular project. But I was one of the volunteers who collected these signatures. And we solicited these endorsements outside the Chatham Village Market, the transfer station, and at the Tuesday afternoon farmer's market over many weeks this summer. And we started by asking only Chatham registered voters to indicate their support of the, not only the construction of a new COA building, but also using the old building for affordable housing in the future. But we realized soon on that, since part-time residents who vote in the town of their primary residents are nevertheless taxpayers in Chatham, we should also seek their endorsement for building a new CFA, Center for Active Living facility at 1610 Main Street. And I myself spoke to, I would say, 30 or 40 of these folks who signed the endorsement ad. And it was interesting to me, several points. First, they are looking forward to retiring to Chatham in a matter of time. I was one of them myself about six years ago. Secondly, they generally were perplexed that there was so much opposition to the proposed project. And thirdly, they were generally of the opinion that, given the wealth in Chatham and the low tax rate here, compared to in their own hometowns, the figure of $11 million would not constitute a hardship for them or the town in order to have a modern facility that they will one day use in their retirement years. And I was interested also during this time, and pleased to see that the Summer Resident Advisory Committee, which has vetted this project themselves, voted recently to endorse the project at 1610 Main Street by a vote of eight to one. Now, I don't know that we might hear from one or more of our summer residents here tonight. But in any event, this is my takeaway from my conversations with these taxpayers and these part-time residents. I wish they could all attend and vote at the special town meeting, but of course, they can't. You can't vote in two residences. But the success of this project will benefit them all in the near future, and for a long time, in their retirement years. And I believe the whole community for a very long time. But we volunteers, I do want them to know, we do thank them for their public support of the upcoming articles at the special town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. Mr. Mansfield? Do we have anybody online? I believe you have a visual aid as well, Mr. Mansfield?
Stan Mansfield from Chatham. It's pretty clear, I think, that we definitely need a new Center for Active Living. And not only is the current facility acceptable, but it's basically dysfunctional, as you'll see as we go along here. Since it's a widely-held view, we decided to visit a number of senior centers locally and talk with the directors and check out the facilities as well. Unfortunately, we're not moving ahead here.
I think you may have to ask him to advance it.
There we go. Okay. This is a reception room for Chatham on the right and for Orleans on the left, okay? And as we go along here, we have not seen a senior center that has a facility that's not worse than Chatham, that's for sure. Chatham is definitely the worst facility. It should be the envy of Cape Cod, like everything else in Chatham is the envy of Cape Cod. And you may need this someday, and many others need it today. This is the reception area for Orleans. And it's extremely welcoming, it's visibly attractive. As you can see, as you come in the front door, your reception desk is right here. And over here is a small meeting room. But the point is, this is a very, very attractive thing. And every senior center has what we call a multiple-purpose room, where they have meetings, exercise, meals, speeches, and entertainment. And it's basically the activity center for the senior center. Ours is less than 1,000 square feet, which is way too small for these activities. And the size limitations exclude seniors from attending. Pre-COVID, we had a number of luncheons for our seniors. Now, because of the size of this room, we had to turn away an average of 20 seniors at each luncheon. This is the Orleans multipurpose room. Very attractive, bright, has partitions that you can slide across to convert to smaller rooms. And we have 1,700 to 2,300 square feet, and that includes moving the partitions for smaller meetings. It's big enough for all multipurpose events. This is the Harwich multipurpose room. And it's also big enough for all events. And as you can see, they have a projection screen, and they have frequent movies for seniors. It's got a stage for entertainment shows. And the kitchen is right here, and they offer a meal every day. And you can see, as you remove these chairs and tables, you're going to have a terrific, you know, clear space for exercise. And this is the Falmouth multipurpose room. When we were there, they had an exercise class. And I noticed that this was really multi-generational. It wasn't restricted to seniors. And at the time, we had roughly 30 people. And as you can see, there's plenty of room for more. This is the Wellfleet multipurpose room. As you can see, all these senior centers have a very attractive, large space for all these activities. It's very bright. It's big enough for all functions. It's got partitions, so you can slide across and cut the space downs for smaller meetings. Here is the Chatham kitchen. It's not really an active kitchen. We have lunches but once a month for seniors, and that's the only time it's ever used. Whereas Harwich and Wellfleet and Falmouth are all active kitchens. This is the Wellfleet kitchen, Marianne's Cafe. And it opens right out into the multipurpose room. It attracts townspeople. They serve two meals a week. And these centers attract people for social reasons, too. So you have, not just to have luncheons, people come in, even in Wellfleet where the senior center is sort of out in nowhere, they attract an awful lot of people. This is the Falmouth kitchen. It serves lunch every day, has indoor and outdoor seating, and attracts many townspeople daily. It's sort of the social center of Falmouth during the lunch hour. And what's this? This is the exercise room in the Chatham Senior Center, which is not functional because it did not meet the health code for ventilation. We did have exercise there about four to five years ago before it was closed down. But even with that, the room could hold 12 mats for exercise. That was it. That was the max. And they have this nice post in the middle, which kind of does not help. And the reason for all the junk in there is basically, this is storage because there's no other place for storage in the building. And recently, we had a survey of seniors, and their number-one desired program was exercise, as you can imagine. This is pretty embarrassing for a town like Chatham to have zero exercise facilities for their seniors. This is Falmouth again. They also have a equipment room, which is very attractive. And again, there is a multipurpose room. All these rooms have sliding partitions to enable them to have meetings of smaller size. We just have to have a new senior center. And this is the design after many-- after a lot of work. And this is what we need. It's bright, it's got nice meeting rooms, socializing, and room for dining, et cetera, et cetera. And this is sort of a resume. We need our own building designed to meet our senior needs. What we have is a house. This house was not designed, was only designed to be a multifamily residence. And since seniors represent 53% of our population, we do owe them a little respect to take care of their needs. 1992, so for 31 years, we've had to deal with a converted facility. And it's not really converted because you can't convert a house into a senior center facility originally designed to be a multifamily residence. Medical studies have shown that exercise benefits promote health for everyone. And again, a recent survey shows that the number-one desire for a program is exercise. What can we do? What can we do to get this going? Could just come vote yes on September 18th? In all our previous votes, the yeses have had a very substantial majority and hadn't quite made 2/3. In order to make 2/3, you need twice as many votes as the opponents. For example, if this is a 300-vote proposition, you would need 200 votes to pass. And at the last meeting, we got 2/3 less, one vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mansfield.
Mike, I have an online participant.
The person who's online will call on you next.
It's Bob Anthony.
Mr. Anthony?
Good evening. My name is Bob Anthony. I'm a summer resident on Derry Street in Chatham and have been for over 35 years. And I retired just recently, 68 years old, and looking forward to retirement in Chatham eventually in several years. And I was at the summer meeting, this summer residence meeting, and I expressed some of the thoughts I'll mention tonight. I had been reading quite a bit about the issues, and I didn't quite understand them all. So I took upon myself to walk through the Chatham facility. And I'm really glad that the other, Mr. Barry, I think it was, introduced us to what the other facilities around the Cape have to offer. I didn't have that time to investigate myself, but I did with Chatham. And the director was very gracious to walk me through a tour. And what you just saw in the most recent presentation is everything, and there's more to it. There's rooms that just cannot be used functionally in the manner they were intended due to either poor ventilation, poor space requirement, lack of a disabled or a non-- I won't say non-functional elevator, but an elevator that requires repair again and it's outdated and probably needs replacement. And the facility, I'm not a construction person, but I do a lot of home maintenance on my own. And I walked around the facility, and it does have a good deal of maintenance to be done to maintain it. And going forward without a solution other than 1610, I'm very concerned that Chatham does not have a path forward for their seniors, myself included. I was really quite disturbed to see the conditions that-- they're quite clean and healthy and all, but the conditions the workers had to deal with because of the limited space and constantly having to convert a room to another function, or a room in the basement, the lower level, I guess it was, that couldn't be used for its original intent. And again, the multipurpose, the multifamily dwelling concept is really what drove that, drives that to be inadequate. And so I apologize for not having a camera on my PC. But the concern, I guess, is that if we don't go with this plan, 1610, what do we actually go with? And what do we budget for? And do we continue to pour almost half as much money into the current facility on Stony Hill to keep it going? Or do we spend, I'm seeing hours and dollars, to do studies and reviews of what could possibly be done in a community center, which I feel is a great solution for Harwich and possibly could work for us. But we've established that facility quite well and used it, I wouldn't say 100%, but we've used it at peak levels 100%. And I don't see the introduction of a senior center and the special requirements that a senior center might require that were very well clearly spoken by the gal, the lady from Mashpee and her professional background, working with seniors. So this is all culminating to, what do we do in place of this? And I am not confident that a no vote is any positive solution for seniors in Chatham. It's getting to the point where I might even consider not living in Chatham as a senior in the future, unfortunately, just because I'm not depending on that center, but I'm really looking forward to it. And without it, I feel that I'd have to travel to another town to be able to benefit from those services. Lastly, I wanted to mention that the cost, everyone's talking about the cost. And I'm an aerospace engineer program manager and retired. And one of the things that we always say in the aerospace business, you know, is that we will avoid all costs so long as they remain hidden. And we will bear all costs so long as they remain hidden. And I believe that the select committee has done a great job of bearing, of showing all the costs that this facility will take. It's moved up and keeps ratcheting up. But I believe they've done a very sufficient job of identifying these costs, so it's an honest broker-type deal. This is what it will cost. The only concern that everybody might want to consider is what does it cost to maintain and run? It will be more costly to run than the current facility, most likely. Unfortunately, we have a large volunteer staff that supports COAs across the Cape. But regardless of that, moving forward with the current facility is just totally, in my mind, insufficient for the needs of the senior community in Chatham. And it is growing. And we have friends who are planning to retire here in the next year, the next five years. And we talk about this, and it's not a comfortable situation. And so I just implore folks to, if you have any question between now and the time of the vote, please take a tour of the facility at Stony Hill and kind of bird's-eye view yourself of what that facility is and is not. And side, would you want yourself there or your parents there for the limited ability to, like I say, the limited physical exercise area that was shown and many of the other small compartmentalized features of that facility? So I don't want to go on anymore. But again, summer residents, year-round at times, through first night, and I enjoy Chatham all seasons. And I just would endorse a vote for yes on the 1610 property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony.
A yes on the phone?
Are you waiting to speak, sir?
Yes.
Please, go ahead.
Yes, hi. This is Judy Patterson speaking. I'm echoing a previous speaker about the community center. I'm a senior myself, and I just want to reiterate the fact that Meredith Fry does not make decisions as to who can use the community center. Many of us believe it's the perfect space without spending $11 million. It's basically empty all day until the students get out of school. I'm from this town, and we were brought up that you need to utilize what we have without increasing the tax burden at this ridiculous rate of money for $11 million. And that's basically all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. Sir, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Peter Metz. I live on Indian Hill Road North, which is right over my shoulder. I've been an owner and taxpayer in Chatham for 27 years. My family loves this place. We are summer residents, but we pay every bit as much taxes for our house as if we lived here all year. I find Chatham to be an excellent and outstanding community. It's been a great joy to be here with a third-rate senior center. I consider it an embarrassment, and I think the town should. I want to remind us all of a couple of things. This year, the Surgeon General issued his annual report, and the topic is loneliness. And he declared that America is entering an epidemic of loneliness. Well, it's at all ages, of course, but it's most concentrated for seniors. I come here for the summer. There's really no place for me to go that isn't commercial, to make associations, and so on. So I forage on my own. There could be a lot more activities in the new senior center than there are now. So that's thing number one. We have a responsibility to combat the epidemic of loneliness and therefore to create an attractive senior center, so that it draws people out of their lonely houses. Second thing I'd point out is the phrase "time is money." We've honestly dilly-dally. I don't think there's been any obfuscation or anything underhanded, but time is money, and the price keeps going up as we wait. It's time to move and make a decision. It won't be the perfect decision. Nothing can be. But that's my third point. Let's not let the perfect stop us from doing something that is very good. And we could go on for ages trying to develop a perfect solution here. We need to get moving and do something very, very good. And as I look at this design for the senior center, it's got flexibility built into it. At the last meeting, I asked about that. I see flexibility built into it. It's designed for the future. It's designed for the future. I hope the town will get on. And I tend to be a senior here for a long time. I said that's the last time. And I want to enjoy a first-class senior center that attracts a lot of wonderful seniors that I can associate, even if I only come here for the summer. And who knows, you might convince me to come for a longer period. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Metz. Thank you very much. Ms. Tilton?
I'm Gail Tilton from Stony Hill Road North, Chatham. I had a visual as well.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
So I think we've just heard witnesses mention all of the disturbing reality of what Chatham has been offering the senior population, who represent more than half of our residents here. The right-hand side of this is a little bit of a review of what Stan had been showing you as far as the type of things that we have at our current facility on Stony Hill Road. And this limitation has made us limited in the programs that we can offer for seniors, which then affects the number of people who participate. So the numbers are not totally accurate in terms of participation because we do not have some of the programs that we would have if we had better space. This can be changed, and it needs to be changed. Happily, everyone seems to agree that this facility no longer meets the needs of this part of our community, if it really ever did. The stumbling block seems to be how to rectify the situation here. I have been a facilitator of some programs here in Chatham dating back eighteen years, and I brought my very first group to the Chatham Community Center. We're actually still meeting there, but slowly we're being pushed out by the recreation programs at that center. And I would like to address the concept that has been discussed over and over here at these town meetings of this belief that we have this huge amount of available space here in Chatham. I think we have to be very careful in discerning between available space and suitable space. I understand there's an open room at the Chatham Squire between breakfast and lunch. Would we use that space for a classroom? Again, I think we have to agree that we have to meet and accommodate the needs of the people using the space. Remember your first kindergarten classroom with those little cubbies down close to the floor where they stored all of the beads and the blocks and the musical instruments for the marching band? And the rug in the center of the room where you had show and tell and sharing? And then you went through the little door out to the courtyard for exercise programs? That space was designed for the needs of a five-year-old. It was safe, it was secure, it was inviting, it was comfortable, it was stimulating, and it was planned. The program was planned, there was compatibility between the planned program and between the planned space. I have an illustrative story to tell you that I'd like to share of me using available space this past year at the Chatham Community Center. For the past five years, I have facilitated a program for the Center for Active Living, which I call Artful Living. It started out as ten people because that's all we could fit into the room at the Stony Hill location. It has grown to typically thirty people, and plus, I invite wellness practitioners from around the Cape, so we have outgrown, we cannot meet any longer at the Stony Hill facility. So I was given a Tuesday morning empty space at the Chatham Community Center. I was given the teen room, and that's exactly the way it sounds. This room, I invite you to go and take a look. It's in the basement of the community center. It's a little dark and dingy down there, and it's furnished with old, heavy couches. Stuffing is kind of falling out. And the kids love the room. They meet there every day after school, and they have a widescreen TV there. It's perfect for that population. But I would have to go down there an hour before my program started, and I'd have to round up a young, a gentleman that worked there, Hunter, thank goodness for Hunter, he would come downstairs with me, and we would move those heavy couches to the perimeter of the room, and then we'd go in search of thirty chairs that we would put in a circle with some people here that were in that class. And we would have to make use of this available space, and I had to do this every Tuesday before the class began. This is not asking for the sun, the moon, and the stars. This is just asking for something that's conducive to giving a wellness program to seniors in an appropriate space. About this time, I signed up for a senior program at the Orleans Senior Center, as you have seen some examples here tonight. It was very obvious that Orleans does recognize the needs of their seniors in their community and the importance of providing a suitable space for their programs. Again, do not take my word for this. Go up and take a tour of the Orleans Senior Center. I talked with some of those seniors there in that program, and they very much valued the fitness programs, the meal programs, which we cannot have, the enrichment programs in a space that's a home for seniors. We obviously recognize we've had a problem here in Chatham because, as has been mentioned, in the last eight years, we have had the thirty-seven or more public meetings. We've spent four-hundred-and-thirty thousand-plus dollars on feasibility studies and studied eleven site plans. And we have watched building costs escalate four million dollars as we squabble over what electrical bills might be twenty years into the future, and we sit here in the lowest tax district on the Cape. The two gentlemen here that presented their program at our last meeting gave a very comprehensive overview of the project at sixteen-ten, and they made a very impressive statement that I took very seriously as they were talking about the senior centers they have designed and here on Cape and off Cape, one of them being in Wellesley. My daughter lives in Wellesley, and I happened to be with her one day as we were driving down their main street, and I said, "What is that building?" And she said, "Oh, that's our senior center." It was a very impressive, attractive building nestled right there in the business district, Main Street, very inviting. The notable statement that these gentlemen made was, "We design these senior centers based on the needs of seniors." How refreshing it was to hear people included in this equation. And the interesting part of this is that that kindergarten classroom that I was referring to earlier and how the needs were based on that, those same needs have not changed much for us as seniors. We are older, maybe less agile, and need those cubbies a little bit higher, but we still need appropriate, suitable activity space for safety and comfort, stimulation, sharing snacks and meals with friends, show and tell, exercise. We can't have an adequate exercise program nestled in between the Sunday School tables and the supportive beams in a church hall. Orleans has Tai Chi, they have Qigong and seated yoga and everyday exercise programs, and they hold them in this well-ventilated, spacious, multipurpose room that you saw earlier on this screen. I've seen it, those are accurate pictures. Shouldn't we have that? Exercise is one of the very vital, basic needs for seniors. We've paid qualified professionals to plan this facility for Chatham that would be an investment into the future of this community. According to the New York Times, sixty-five thousand baby boomers turn sixty-five every minute, and you know some of them are going to be heading to Chatham. The time has come for us to listen to the voice of experience and pay attention to the needs of the people here in this community and plan for our future. Think about it, just because the baseball field is not being used on Wednesday afternoon, would it be appropriate to hold basketball practice there? We need to put people back into this equation and pay attention by planning for the needs with suitably-designed spaces that will allow us to provide good programs that allow for socialization. The Surgeon General's message was just mentioned here, that isolation is a serious epidemic, and it is causing illness among the elderly. And we need to promote wellness for everyone in the Chatham community and make eighty-five the new sixty-five. And I think that will become the topic of my next Artful Living course. I hope you will consider the Chatham Senior Community on September eighteenth and vote yes for this professionally-planned home for the Center for Active Living at sixteen-ten Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Tilton. We have one person online, I'm going to call on them, and then Mr. Oppenheim.
We have Stephen Dan, I'm sorry, Stephen Buckley online.
Mr. Buckley, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. I was reminded of, I'm glad that the gentleman who showed us the pictures of the Welfleet, Harwich, Orleans, senior centers and their multipurpose rooms, because I've been to all of those places, and it was for not, it wasn't for senior things, it was for community events. And so the idea of a multipurpose room and multi-generational, as another previous speaker had said, was something I've been wondering about because a lot of the discussion and promotion for a new senior center seemed to be all about the seniors. And I'm a senior, I'm sixty-nine, so not, so anyway, everybody always thinks of them as the older. No matter how old you get, you always think the old people are older than you. So anyway, I was curious about whether or not the new senior center was, would be only for people over sixty, which is what they define as a senior citizen. And I talked earlier today with the executive director there to confirm that in anticipation of speaking tonight, to ask, you know, if there is space available, like in a multipurpose room, for instance, or wherever, if there's space available at the sixteen-ten location, if there was a new building, would somebody who is not yet sixty be able to go there or reserve it even, or be allowed to walk into the building? So like I've seen, like I said, I've gone to the other towns, and they are sharing their senior center, their Center for Active Living, whatever, and they are. So they're getting more bang for their buck. It's not just an exclusive club for old people. And I think when I keep hearing, oh, this is, this is going to be, the seniors deserve this, senior, 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 I never hear, I rarely hear a multi-generational, multipurpose, until tonight. So I would ask that someone, someone, I believe the executive director for the Council on Aging, Center for Active Living, is there and can confirm that this would be the case. And if she wanted to add anything in light of what's been said tonight about the idea of multi-generational, under-sixty use of the new facility. And if there's any time left, I'll up my five minutes. I'm not sure how much there is now, a couple of minutes, but anyway, is that possible for me to use part of my time to have her?
We can, I mean, we're not going to charge you anything for Ms. LaCrosse's comments. She's part of the resources that we've made available here to clear things up, so we'll let her address your question, and then Mr. Oppenheim.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Yes, we did speak today, and I will confirm that anybody is welcome at the Center for Active Living. In fact, we do currently provide services. If somebody asks for help, if they come to our door, I have found in my career that when somebody asks for help, if you don't serve them in that moment, you might lose them, and they might not ask for help again. So if someone walks through the door seeking help, we will help them. If somebody, if other entities want to use our new C-FAL or our current C-FAL, they are absolutely able to do so. They just have to call to make sure the room's available. So yes, I am confirming that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Buckley, do you want to use any more of your two minutes for anything else?
Yeah, I would just say that if, I would have liked to bring that up at the last town meeting, but there wasn't enough, too many speakers ahead of time. And for those people who, and there may be just a few, were on the fence, the idea that the developing West Chatham Village District, Village Center, this would be a resource for everyone, it wouldn't just be for the old people, and especially the new neighborhood that at the former Buckley property, which the town is trying to decide what to do, but that'll be an example of literally two-minute walk. Anybody from that neighborhood would be able to go down there, including, I would assume, kids, under proper supervision, could be able to use it as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Oppenheim?
David Oppenheim, Abscammy Run. I've lived in town for over fifty years. I should note that I am a new member of the board of the Friends of the Chatham Council on Aging. I've been a builder, developer, business owner in this town for over fifty years, and seen a lot of changes and a lot of redevelopment in this town, a lot of buildings and things like that. Sixteen-ten was not my first choice, it's not my second choice, and now it's, I'm convinced and have said, I am convinced, and I am supporting it because I think it's absolutely the best choice. It's been vetted, it's been changed, it's been adjusted. People say there hasn't been any changes made. Well, we've now found out that this can be used as an emergency center, which I think is a big plus, and I think it's time for us to do, to get this done and get it done right. We built this, I was on the Capitol Projects Review Committee when we built this building, when we built the police station. They were built, they were expensive, we take, they've met our needs, we take great care of them. I was not on the committee when it did the fire station, which went through iterations, it got more expensive, it's been built, it's beautiful, it functions, it meets our needs, we take care of it. We have a habit in this town when we don't know what to do with something, an older building, we let it go away. It just rots, and I won't get into some of the examples, but we all know what they are. So one of the biggest selling points for me and for a lot of people I know that were on the fence about expenses is what are we going to do with the existing building once the new one's built? We now have a plan. It's going to be, it's going to be housing. What kind of housing? I think our new housing director, Ms. McPherson, said it very well the last time, whatever we want it to be. We can look at it, we can study it, we can find out the best use. We have two years to make those decisions. Usually, we have things, we buy things, we study them, we study them on end, it takes forever for anything to happen. For me, the idea that in combining getting what our seniors deserve and should have and have something of the standards that we've met for our police, our fire, this meeting room, is a necessity and something we have to do. But to know that we're going to go then take one-ninety-three and make it into housing, any sort of housing, because this town needs housing as much as it needs anything, is a big plus. I've heard one argument against it, that was to guilt-trip people into voting for this. Well, if that's guilt-tripping, it's pretty good planning for guilt-tripping because it's, I think it's not guilt-tripping, I think that's a false argument. What it is, is a new standard that maybe we should be using and embrace going forward in this town, that when we have something that's left over, we figure out what to do with it. I strongly urge everybody to go to town meeting, show up at town meeting. I know a vast majority of people are in favor, but we need to vote, so I hope everybody will show up and vote for this so we can get it done, get, move on with that, and get housing done also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oppenheim. I think we have somebody online. Is it S.L.?
We have Ms. Gibbs online.
Ms. Gibbs?
Yes, thank you very much, Elaine Gibbs. First of all, I just wanted to mention that in, and you guessed it by one of the select board members, it said Chatham has one of the largest, if not the largest, senior populations on the Cape. That isn't an accurate statement. As of the most recent census data, I got the link from the town clerk, Chatham has sixty-seven-hundred-and-eleven residents, and that is forty-six-point-four percent of that population is sixty-five or over, for a total of thirty-one-hundred-and-thirteen people. Thalmouth has a senior population of ten-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-seven, and Yarmouth, Mashpee, Dennis, and Lawrenceville all have larger senior populations than Chatham does. In terms of the location, I am opposed- In terms of the location, I am opposed to this and have been for a long time because of the location. 1610 Main isn't free. The lot size, shape, and grade will require extensive site work. A good portion of that 1.628 million is going to be required for fill, limiting it to a two-story design requiring an elevator, bathrooms on both floors, staircases, and additional staff. The Route 28 location is a noisy state road used by 18-wheel delivery trucks downshifting 25 feet from the front door of the building. 400 feet from the runway protection zone, where 10-seater charter planes, P12s, holding 2,700 pounds of fuel, take off and land routinely, and they are heard two miles away. Some people have said it's not noisy. Well, you don't hear the noise when you're sitting in your car with your windows up, but you do hear it if you want active living space outdoor. The location only allows a right-hand turn for safety, insufficient parking with visitors having to navigate perpendicularly, park cars on both sides of the entrance, two miles from the fire department in the event of a medical emergency or fire. With no quiet—virtually no quiet outdoor green space for recreational activities or dining, it's not an active living facility, I think, by any definition. It is going to be another town annex. One of the other things I'm concerned about is that we do know that DPW and other people were talked to, but they have—we have not gone before conservation. This property abuts the Water Resource Protection District, and it's going to require a 42-foot retaining wall because of the massive drop-off down to the pond, and that's within the buffer zone in the top of the bank. So I think the first thing we should have done is gone to conservation, not the last thing. No traffic studies have been done since the roundabouts went in. They were done two or three years ago, and no consideration has been put in the equation about the fact that the planning board is ready to present within the next six months to a year a major zoning bylaw change that is going to markedly increase the density between the two roundabouts, the West Chatham corridor, including affordable housing that is going to go right there. The traffic that that is going to cause increase is going to be tremendous. I mean, we have all been stuck in those roundabouts this summer, backed up, trying to get through, and it's going to get worse with the amount of density that is planned over the next 10 to 15 years, which is, you know, certainly within the lifespan of this property. I've heard a lot of people say, you know, we're going to settle for it, and including the Council on Aging people, I don't think we should settle. I don't think we can also look at this in a vacuum. You know, we talk about, well, it's going to cost $191, $200, you know, on your tax bill. Well, that money adds up because we have serious expenses facing us regarding our water and sewer, and we don't know those numbers yet. They're coming, but they're not going to be here in time for town meeting in terms of what we need to do to meet our objectives within the next five years. We also have a lot of infrastructure issues to deal with. The elementary school, the middle school are going to have serious expenses. And we have allowed our properties to deteriorate, and that's not what we should do. We shouldn't have allowed the existing Council on Aging to deteriorate, or the water department, or the elementary school, or the original fire station. We should take care of what we have. And we have over 100,000 square feet of underutilized town municipal buildings in varying stages that I believe what we have is not the need for new space. We have a scheduling, repurposing, and upgrading problem, not a space issue. And my final comment is that the finance committee took their vote on Saturday—or on Friday—as to whether or not to support it, and it was a 3-3 vote. So they had concerns as well about the unknowns in terms of the expenses we have facing this community. And there comes a point where people on fixed incomes have to make decisions as to what they're going to buy, because they are spending an awful lot on day-to-day living. And increasing taxes, the way ours are going to go up, just by virtue of the fact that our assessments have gone up so much, is going to be prohibitive for some. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. Mr. Levitt?
Yeah, I can't see who it is now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Rick Levitt. My wife and I live in West Chatham, and we are staunch supporters of this project. The finance committee did meet last week, and what they did say was really quite interesting. A modest increase in the annual operating budget for a modern Center for Active Living costs less than one penny on the tax rate. Better yet, the updated budget provides elderly residents suffering from dementia with supervised daycare. And as mentioned earlier tonight, the town's first overnight emergency storm shelter, open to all, not just the elderly. Chatham's finance committee and finance director refuting some of these far-fetched claims reported that the town has more than ample room for borrowing to build a modern Center for Active Living and pegs the cost to the average taxpayer, all of us sitting here. At $114 a year, less than $10 a month, we can afford a new and modern Center for Active Living. My experience has been that once we build it, controversy will turn to community pride. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Bagnall, and then in the back, is that Mr. Fulcher?
Yes.
After Ms. Bagnall, please.
I'm Joan Bagnall, and I also—excuse me—I also serve on the Board of Directors of the COA, our council. It's a pretty sad affair when the board cannot meet in the building that we're the board of. If you're long and short, you've got to sit at one end of the table, because if you're tall, you're going to hit your head on the rafters. That's a sad comment on a building that is completely inadequate. There is—the elevator is freezing cold, there's no room for lots of activities. I'm a senior citizen. I've been one for a long, long time, and I still want to be for a long time. But I think that the new building is something that we should be proud of. And I find that a lot of people that are objecting to the building have never participated in any activities at the senior center. They have walked by it, gone by it, but they haven't been in it. And as far as the community center, we keep getting refused from that by other things other than this lady that's on recreational. I think that if you consider, there is no kitchen. We can't really use the rooms when we should be. And if you think about it, what would be held up and how difficult it would be, like the summer program, if we were building onto that building? I mean, it just doesn't go up in a couple of days. It takes a long time. And that space would be occupied with the building materials, and as it is now, they use it in the summer. Well, we might be there a summer or more, but it's not a building that can be readily used as it is now. But I really think that people in town should really consider—I have been active in the community center since the '70s, and I recently had to have some—it's very difficult to put your socks on sometimes, and they'd hand-delivered a little sock thing so I could put my socks on. It's all these little things that people that are not involved and have not participated in any of the programs, they're being very—they're not being objective. They're objecting, and who cares how many feet are between people and all this stuff that quoting all this type of thing? We're human beings. We can adapt. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bagnall. Mr. Fulcher?
Good evening. Jared Fulcher. I do want to say that I have used the COA, the current COA, on occasion. I know Jessica Rogers, and she's an excellent program manager down there. My complaint here is not with the presence of a COA in town. It's certainly not with the staff or the services that are provided. I think my complaint is that the current COA, the current site, got a cursory look at being replaced. I think the carrot that was dangled of 1610 Main Street was kind of what got everybody to just get on board with this. We already own 193 Stony Hill. I think that we should stay there. I'm not saying that the building does not need improvement. It does. I used to be a town employee. I saw that building inside and out many times, sure. But the building is not even 40 years old. I believe that when this—when this board took on repurposing 193 Stony Hill Road for housing—how can—you repurpose it for housing if you're telling me that the site is not feasible in its current state for a COA? How could you put somebody there—living there? It's ridiculous. The town does not have a good track record of maintaining the buildings that it already owns. I'm not in favor of spending $11 million on new buildings that ultimately will be neglected and need a replacement 30 years from now. And it's already been brought up, a number of buildings that have gone by the wayside in this town. On a more personal note, I'm a native of this town. My family's been here for 13, 14, 15 generations. I am thoroughly disgusted with the history companies and what they have done to this town. I have no respect for them. I do not think that this town should be accepting a gift from a developer who built eight cluster developments in a 16-square-mile town and has continually flouted the regulations in this town. I think as a matter of integrity, this board should have, right off the bat, refused this gift of land—gift. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fulcher. I think we have somebody—Ms. Hanlon, and then we have somebody online, and then the gentleman back there.
I'm Judy Hanlon. I am vice president of the Friends Board at the Chatham Council on Aging. More importantly than that, I've been a volunteer at the Council on Aging for 16 years. When I started in 2007, I was not a senior, and my hair wasn't gray. Couple of 10 years of trying to get a COA took care of that. Many of the diners who came in for lunch two and then three days a week were in their 80s and 90s. They were a mix of Chatham natives and Washashores who settled here after many years as summer residents. Most spoke of how the social contact with others was the primary reason that they were there. After lunch, many of them stayed to play bridge or watch a movie downstairs, downstairs in the small corner by the medical equipment storage area. But the seniors of today, which now includes me, want more active programs. After all, we're now the Center for Active Living. Unfortunately, the current building doesn't have enough functional space to provide these kinds of programs. Imagine what we could provide when we do have more space. How about classes in Zumba, Tai Chi, yoga, and even line dancing? Classes that could hold more than the 10 or 12 participants that Gail was talking about earlier. As one of the eight folks who squeezed into the small kitchen for cooking classes at the current facility, I would be thrilled to have a larger area where more people could participate in Chef Heather Bailey's healthy cooking demonstrations. By the way, there's no kitchen in the community center. Quilting and needlework classes could be added. We could offer intergenerational lunches with local schoolkids. We've never had the room for that before. Lunches with entertainment provided could seat more than 25 to 30 people that our current facility can't manage, more than that they can't manage. "If you build it, they will come" was never proven more true than at the new Falmouth Senior Center. In data I received from the Falmouth COA director, I learned that check-in swipes using the My Senior Center at their new center have increased from 2019 to 2023 by 348%. More folks have joined the center. Transportation services have increased, as did participation in programs and services, up from 24,299 in 2019 to 70,066 in 2023. That's an increase of 288%. The older residents I served lunch to in 2007 are no longer with us. These members of the Greatest Generation never got a chance to experience a large, modern, state-of-the-art center. We have a chance now to offer my generation and future generations just such a place. That is our vision. Please don't let another generation or more lose that opportunity. Mahatma Gandhi, the famous Indian leader and pacifist, once said, "The true measure of any society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable members." Chatham, this is our chance to measure up. Please vote yes on Article 5 at the special town meeting next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanlon. We—I believe we have Ms. Gloria Freeman online with her hand up, and then the gentleman in the back. Ms. Freeman?
Yes, thank you. It's Gloria Freeman. You have heard most of my concerns about the COA at 1610 Main Street, of the location, size, and cost, and I'm not going to repeat them tonight. Here's what I do want to say. In a letter to the editor, I reported that the town's property valuation had increased 47% over the last three fiscal years, 2022 through 24. It turns out the increase is 55.2%. This increases property assessments even more, as well as taxes. Taxpayers will see the impact of the most recent 17% increase in the fall property assessments, increasing our property taxes again. And it is those on fixed incomes who suffer the most, or low incomes, people in affordable housing perhaps. Some proponents of the COA have trivialized taxpayers who worry about their taxes, coupled with all the other increasing costs. The insensitivity is disgraceful, belittling those who perhaps cannot have dinner at one of Chatham's fine restaurants but wish they could. It is divisive and not at all in keeping with the Team 1610's farewell letter, in which they talk about unity, connectivity, and sense of community. There is no sense of community when signs are kicked in, found in dumpsters, or stolen. Most of us know about planning for a rainy day. In my family, that meant putting money aside, not determining how much money we could borrow, because that would add loan payments to the list of our other expenses. We planned by conserving, cutting down, and managing. Townspeople need to be ready for any surprises that could come our way before we're punched in the face. Water—I always eventually get to water. Water. I always eventually get to water. There is no economy without water or the infrastructure to pump it, store it, and deliver it. For several years, we were held under a mandatory water restriction. We know how important water is, pure and abundant. There are critical fiscal priorities facing the town concerning our wells. And then there are those that can occur the way PFAS did, suddenly costing $19.8 million to remediate. I'll finish by saying how critical it is to vote on September 18th. Some people say it's useless, because those of us who opposed the COA at 1610 are up against Chatham's version of a huge political machine, which has access to staff, the ability to hold and control meetings such as this one, the ability to hire a public relations firm, and has access to our phone numbers and email addresses and town social media sites, and uses that access. But that doesn't make me want to stay home on September 18th. We have won three times before. Remember, we have electronic voting now, which gives us confidentiality and privacy. And importantly, the other side has to have a 2/3 vote to win. So come vote. Your no vote might just be the one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Young. I'm a full-time resident in Chatham. And I did elect to speak at the moment now, because I think I have three points to make today that are unique and maybe worthy of consideration at this juncture. So my first point was that I was very surprised that the geriologist from Mashpee brought up the issue of the COVID experience as a reason for support for the new COA facility. I actually view it as one of the biggest, perhaps, reasons to be against the COA. I mean, obviously, we came through two years roughly of lockdowns, and it would be a tragedy to spend all this money and then to be in a situation where it's able to get no use. So I certainly do believe that isolation is an illness, and I beseech the select board and other town officials to reject and resist to the greatest we possible lockdowns and mask mandates and other such draconian measures that might invalidate the use of this new facility. The second point that I thought I would make today is that I'm actually probably a unique animal in this room. I actually am genuinely undecided. I am undecided, because I think the need is pretty obvious. But I'm undecided, because I do have grave concerns about the cost. I do have grave concerns about the issue that Mr. Fultcher brought up eloquently. I have problems with the gift, and I have a problem with the history of the gift as it's transformed over the last several years, which I think most of you are probably aware about. And lastly, I do share sentiments expressed, I thought eloquently, by Ms. Freeman that perhaps the democratic process has been thwarted here. I mean, we have had three votes on this, maybe four. The people have spoken, and I think it's a little disappointing, despite the somewhat obvious need that the people have voted and their voices keeps getting rejected. So out of principle, I have some grave reservations about that, too. My last and concluding point, and this is really directed towards the board, because it's a matter for the board. I'd like to start on a positive note by commending the board of taking the action, I think it was last week, of rejecting the so-called residential exemption in Chatham. I spoke out a year ago at this time, at this same podium, in opposition to the consideration and voting of that residential exemption. And I thought I delivered a number of good points then. But in summary, I felt it was exceptionally divisive and totally contravening the entire history and tradition of Chatham. So I commend you for the recent vote. And the reason I bring it up here today is that I sincerely hope, and I want to go on record as saying such, that there is not a bait and switch coming before us. I certainly understand why the residential exemption may have been rejected last week, because obviously we have a substantial issue before us, and that would certainly muddy the waters to be talking about a residential exemption. I hope if this new facility is approved and built, that the board does not then decide to implement a residential exemption, because doing so would significantly alter and skew the cost per taxpayer projections that we just witnessed about a half hour ago. And in particular, I think of Mr. Anthony, who mentioned that he was a summertime resident, and clearly, a summertime resident, of which we know they pay 2/3 of the tax revenue in this town, would share even a greater burden in terms of cost of the new COA facility. So therefore, I hope the residents of this town would join me in expressing a desire to keep a universal, flat tax rate in the town, and that the burden is therefore shared equally based on assessed value. And secondly, I also hope, and I'll conclude on this, that if the board is actually contemplating a change in the residential exemption status, or implementing a residential exemption, or a two-tiered structure, some manifestation of that, that it actually indicate and be forthcoming at the town meeting on Monday night to give people a heads-up that the cost projections that they are being told about in one presentation may change. I think that would be the only fair and rightful thing to do if next year the residential exemption is going to be implemented. I think that would be extremely, extremely disingenuous. And I thank you for your time and consideration on that point.
Thank you, Mr. Young. I believe you're the next up, Mr. Mott. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity. I'm live. I don't have any visuals, so it's just me. And I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, to be honest. So I apologize in advance for any non-eloquence. But a number of things have been brought up that I just think are important to bring up, not just, not to the people who are in this room, but the people who might be listening and don't know this. You show us pictures of Falmouth Senior Center. Falmouth is a town of 32,000 people. We are a town of 6,500. Someone talks a little bit about Wellesley. Wellesley's a community of 30-some-odd thousand. We are a town of 6,500. People have said, "We should be proud of a senior center. We should have a state-of-the-art senior center." Many of us who oppose the senior center don't oppose the idea that it needs improvement, and there needs to be a solution. We're just saying that this particular one at 1610 isn't the solution for us. Shout out to Gail Tilton. Gail, if you're still here, thanks so much for reading my U guested. I appreciate that, because I worked on that a little bit for The Sun, The Moon, and The Stars. And I think there is some truth to that. One of the speakers that spoke remotely talked a little bit about, he'd been to Orleans, he'd been to, you know, a few of the other senior centers, and how welcoming they were. I believe each of the towns that he brought up, yes, they have a senior center, but it also serves as a community center for them. You look at Orleans. Orleans doesn't have a 22,000-square-foot community center. It has its senior facility, and that's it. One of the big issues for me is that we have 22,000 in one place. You're suggesting another 10,000, almost 11,000 in another place. Again, we are a community of 6,500 people. Yes, we are a well-to-do community, but that doesn't mean that we need to spend our money frivolously. I think there is economies of scale that haven't been looked at. One of the things I encourage everyone to do is to read those preliminary site tests. They're available online. You can find them. You can look at them. And I believe they're in the town hall. Take a look at them and really read what some of the objections were to places like the community center, or even renovating and rehabilitating the current facility. I can't honestly say, and I've read them all, I can't honestly say that they were done without prejudice or done with objectivity. So please, take the time, before you vote, to go ahead and read those, and you make your own decision. And finally, to those people who are against the senior center, who stand with me, and also people who are undecided, don't be afraid of opposition. Remember that a kite rises against the wind, not with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mott. Yeah, Mr. Hoggan?
Good evening. John Hoggan, one of those 55% of us who are taxed but not represented, because we are, you know, legal residents of places like Florida, where, for instance, as I just throw out this one, there was a comment made about the fact that 1610 basically has sort of heavy traffic. Where? I'm sorry. I live in Clearwater. Those type of traffic volumes are what I go to for quiet streets. And compared to the traffic that I believe exists down by the community center, it's probably not as nearly as much of a problem. As far as, for instance, there was also a comment about truck traffic. Exactly how much? And exactly noise from downshifting? I don't believe that. I'm sorry, you know? I don't think they're going to be using jake brakes there. They're not going fast enough to require it. But another point I wanted to touch on was this comment about, and I actually talked to somebody who didn't quite get the concept that, and I think Alex will back me up on this, that when it comes to valuation of taxes, it is sort of a financial seesaw. We could theoretically double the valuation of the town, and then we would obviously have to offset by cutting the tax rate in half, so that we raise the same amount of money. The money amount of money we raise is not dependent upon the valuation, correct? It's, so if the total amount of money may, where it's raised from may change, yes. If your particular property goes up dramatically higher because you're on the shore, compared to somebody who was on Middle Road, let's say, or somewhere in that area, you know, yes, you may end up paying more taxes. But then, I think the person who lives in those other parts of town may actually end up seeing a tax decrease. So that's something that, that sort of equation of things stay in balance, I think is something that really needs to be, you know. It's been tried to educate people in some way, but I think it still hasn't quite worked. There are some things that I would like to mention as far as for the emergency shelter situation. I don't think there presently is a location in town that serves as one. I don't think we currently have a facility for that. I don't think there's anything that's planned. And so if we had something, at least, you know, a starter facility, yes. You know, should we put all our eggs in one basket and have one facility? I don't think so. I think, as I mentioned before, I think the distributed situation, maybe having two facilities, one for where I'm in the town, one for you guys downtown, you know, is a good idea. So it is two miles from the fire station. Well, Cape Cod Tech is two miles from Harwood Station 1 and 3 and 1/2 miles from Station 2. So that's where the regional center is. So is it a problem for them? No. Okay, so why should it be a problem for us? There was a comment made from somebody along the way, the media I follow, as far as that, well, you know, the number of showers would not be adequate. I'm friends with some truck drivers. They're lucky if they get a shower every two or three days. You know, this is not going to be a hotel. I'm sorry, you know? What happened to all those people, for instance, way back when? You know, when they packed thousands of people in the Superdome for Katrina? You know, did they care about showers? I don't think so. They just wanted a place to stay. So there's things of that nature that, you know, I think there are some people who are sort of pulling up all sorts of false arguments. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hoggan. Mr. Levitt?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Normally, we wouldn't speak twice, but a couple of speakers here tonight have spoken twice. And I just wanted to refer to one of the previous speakers. All of us in town, particularly this summer, didn't feel like we were in a small town of 6,500 people. Chatham has a population of 33,000 people, like Wellesley and the other towns that were mentioned. We manage this town for all of the residents in this town. And as was indicated previously here tonight, a great many summer residents would like to see an improved, modern, new center for active living.
Thank you, sir.
It is short. Good evening, members of the Select Board and fellow voters and guests. My name is Paula Carroll, and I have been visiting Chatham since 1959 and bought a house in 1991. And we now live full-time in Chatham. I've been volunteering at the COA and on the Friends Board for seven years. I run the monthly birthday luncheons at the Center for Active Living. The people who attend these events are mostly 80 years old or over because of the small space that we have. So it's one of the ways we keep the numbers down. Many are widows and widowers living alone. They express such gratitude for the chance to be celebrated, waited on, and socialized with others born in the same month. One memorable quote was from a woman who said that she hadn't enjoyed ice cream and cake in 15 years. "Each time a vote for a new center has been taken, passed by the majority but not able to make the 2/3 requirements, including by the lack of the infamous one vote, I listen to the people at the month's, at that month's birthday party." Just as an example, here are three comments from them. "Do they just want us to stay in our homes and not be seen?" "Why do they hate old people?" "And most sad, are they just waiting for us to die?" "We've all heard and seen the arguments on both sides of location, cost, tax consequence, perceived lack of attendance. But I am here to ask from the bottom of my heart to make a yes vote for the population we are all, or will join, unless someone out there has a secret, and validate their worth and needs, and show you value, and show you value our community here in Chatham of a purpose center that could host services way beyond what we have. Be the one." Thank you.
We have one person here who I don't believe has spoken in, is that Ms. Norris? Yeah, go ahead, and then Ms. Gibbs, and then hopefully we can let the board have their say and call it a night.
Hi, I'm Deb Norris, and I live in Chatham, and I have sat there tonight and listened to people speak about things on both sides, and I have tried to listen respectfully and to absorb the information that each person has delivered. I, by the way, am a very strong supporter of 1610. The one thing that made me positively angry and decided to speak, even though this is not my thing, is somebody called it frivolous. You can apply any adjective that you want to what we're trying to accomplish. Do not call it frivolous.
Thank you, Ms. Norris. Ms. Gibbs, if I'm lucky, I'm going to give you the privilege of the valedictory tonight, so go ahead.
Oh, great. A lot of pressure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Noel, I'm sorry. I've just been told there's somebody else in line, so take the pressure off.
Okay. Just quickly, I think there needs to be some clarity about Mr. Buckley's statements and how his understanding that suddenly the COA is morphing into, oh, yes, everybody's welcome, children, local people, tourists. I don't thi, is that what you really mean? Because, you know, the way his understanding and my understanding is now that anybody can go in there and we can reserve space for functions, whether they're kids or anyone else, that it's going to be a multi-generational facility. And if that's not the case, that has to be clarified before town meeting, because a lot of promises are being made, that it's going to be, you know, an overnight shelter, which again, has not been vetted, because we don't even know how we're going to staff it. And now that it really is multi-generational, it's not just for seniors. So that's got to be worked out, because we can't be making promises to the voters and not delivering on it. And if it's truly going to be for everybody, then, you know, they've got to know that so that they can, you know, plan a party, because that's what you're sounding like it's going to be used for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.?
You have Pat Burke on the phone.
Oh, Ms. Burke, okay. Pat, are you on? Would you like to speak?
Just briefly, Mike. Thank you very much. My name is Pat Burke, and I am the chairperson of the Chatham Council on Aging Board of Directors. And what I would like to say is two things. One, I would like to address the fellow who talked about the COVID, and what I can say about that is, the Chatham Center for Active Living, which was then known as the Council on Aging, was extremely active during COVID, and we were able to help people who were stuck in their homes. We initiated classes and Zoom classes for them, as well as initiating vaccines. So I don't want people to think that for some reason we did not do anything. And my other comment is, currently at the Chatham Center for Active Living, to address Ms. Gibbs, is we are welcoming to anybody who comes to the door. We do not usually have children coming to the door as they go to the community center, but anyone who comes to our door, we welcome with open arms. You can ask Leah LaCrosse, or Jess Rogers, or anybody who's there, Mary Ann Miller, the people who are there full-time, the days I spend there as a Chatham Councilor. We talk to anyone. It does not matter who you are. So I just wanted to clear that up before people make a decision based on information that may not be 100% accurate. And I can also tell you that were we able to have a functional building which would really enable us to see many more people, we would be able to serve the needs of the Chatham senior community much better than we are right now. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate the time.
Thank you very much, Pat. I'm told Mr. George Myers is on. Are you still on, Mr. Myers?
Yes, I am.
Please, go ahead.
Okay. I'm, George Myers, I'm a former full-time resident, a former summer resident. I just have a couple of very quick points. Those who point to the increase to assessment of the Chatham Homes, it never, never seems to mention that Chatham's tax rate is the lowest on the Cape, and has been steadily decreasing for the past 10 years, from 5.08 to 3.57, and that's according to the Department of Revenue. What this means is that, and this is something the Finance Committee has noted in many of its previous annual reports, Chatham's average tax bill is no greater than other towns on the Cape, and in fact, the Chatham's 2023 average tax bill was the 10th lowest on the Cape, and that's again, according to the Department of Revenue data. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'm going to close the public comment. I'm going to offer the board members an opportunity to make a short comment, and then I have just one closing comment. Yes, Mr. Nick Castro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I very much appreciate the comments of everybody, pro and con. I wanted to just make a comment that's associated with the lead-up to the special town meeting, because I did receive a phone call today from a resident who reported that a sign that he had placed on a property was removed, and asked me what could be done about it, and whether I would be willing to make a statement tonight about it. And I encouraged him to call the police department. And I certainly don't believe that people who are watching this meeting or sitting here are participating in those types of activities, and I heard about another incident second-handedly yesterday. But I certainly would hope that anyone who does witness these activities, on whatever side, would report them to the police. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Nick Castro. Ms. Davis?
Thank you, Mike. I truly appreciate everybody who's sat here twice to, to listen and to voice their opinions. Everybody's opinions do count, and we do hear you. I might not agree with some of them, but I do appreciate them. I, I see this project as something that, you know, we're in the home stretch of something that could be really valuable for the community, and I'm hoping that, to see a lot of faces at town meeting. But before that, I'd really like to thank the project design team and construction team, just to say thank you for the presentations you did the last time. Were well, well-thought and thorough, and you've been with us for longer than you probably want it to be, obviously, but saying all that. And Alex, your presentations have been outstanding and thorough, and the staff has been wonderful during this process. So folks, get out, come to town meeting, voice your concerns, and vote. Thank you.
Mr. Dykens?
Yeah, thank you, Mike. I've done a great job as vice chair organizing or helping organize both these forums, and I really appreciate everybody showing up here tonight. I see faces that we hear last week, as well, two weeks ago, I should say, as well. But, you know, this, this effort has been eight years in the making, and we finally, I think, have come to a point where we have an offering in the right location, with the right design, and the right thoughtfulness that was given to that design to place in front of the voters for, for a vote on the 18th. It's critical that we get the vote out. It's critical that we get the two-thirds, and this is why. What we invest in as a community is really a reflection of our values. And so voting yes for this center is a reflection of the support that we'd like to give our seniors here, and we'd like to support the programming here, and we'd like to support the, the design and the thoughtfulness that has gone into this offering. This will be a superb facility for this town, a facility that we could truly be proud of, and a facility that frankly will help anchor West Chatham as a neighborhood center, and it would just be a total asset to this community. It'll be an asset for 40 years. We're not talking about an asset for the next five or 10 years. This is an asset this community will be using long, long after I'm gone. This will be an asset for the next 40 years plus. And we just added the, the opportunity to have a warming shelter, if you will, evacuation shelter as well, as an option inside it. This town can afford this. It's been proven we can afford it. Yes, you can talk about what happens in the future. There's a boogeyman always around every corner. Yes, who anticipated PFOs? No one. Every community in America is facing PFOs, but we will figure out how to finance PFOs. We'll get some help from the government along the way. But this is a vote for our local community. This is a vote for you and me, as we age, as we age along, and it's a vote we should take, and it's a vote we should say yes to. It is a no-brainer, as far as I'm concerned. On top of it, yes, Mr. Marsh has developed a lot of the town, but he's also offering us a million-dollar gift. Mr. Oppenheim has stated that he's, he's spearheading an effort, along with the friends of the Council on Aging, to raise another million dollars. So the overall cost has already been defrayed. At one point, we were talking about buying 1610 for a million-plus, and that's why, one of the reasons why Mr. Marsh decided to donate it to us. So this is a test of our values going forward. This is a test of what we value as a town and as a community, and what we want to invest in as a community. And this is really something we really should be investing in. And I look forward to seeing you on your 18th, and I really do ask for your vote. A vote for you, from your friends, your relatives. Let's get this vote out and get this done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm just going to be very brief here. Number one, I want to commend everybody. Participation in community affairs is critically important. I don't care whether you're on this side or that side, of whichever issue we happen to be talking about, coming out and expressing your views, engaging is so important, and we've seen a tremendous example of that tonight, and I, I want to thank everybody who has, has been out here and done that tonight. It's no secret where I am on this issue. I've written a number of things. I've spoken on it, most recently, as was mentioned. I did a guest editorial for The Chronicle. Maybe you read it. I know at least Ms. Gibbs did, if nobody else did. This is important. That's all I can say. Mr. Dykens and Ms. Davis and Mr. Nick Castro have said it more eloquently than I can. Just, I will say, please come and vote. Whatever your view is, please come out and vote. And then I want to conclude with, as usual, Shereen stole my thunder. I want to thank all of the staff people, starting with Joel and Rick, our architect and our OPM, for sitting here, coming out, being available, being prepared to answer questions, all the work they've done to get us to this point. I want to thank every member of the staff that was here, Leah, if I've left, and Jill, all the work that's been done to, again, to get us to this point. Chief Devano sat through this in the, in the event that he might be needed to answer a question. If I'm leaving anybody out, oh, I see Gloria McPherson is here, and if there's somebody else that I'm leaving out, forgive me. I think it's terrific what the staff does for this town, and I want to thank you for bringing us here. So with that, I will invite a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nick Castro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
And the vice chair says aye. Thank you. Good night, Chatham. Thank you again.[1757.85][1757.85][music]